I think all leading order.
What's the reason is unified and in the United States of America. And if you're very public for what you're saying is, or my nation under God, any of this will.
First on our. Uh first on our agenda is the reorganization of the board. I think. Donnie, I think. We should appoint you as president of the board.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Then uh.
I'll nominate. Mr. Cheswick for vice president.
I'll second. We'll change Justin Tranley as our attorney. Make that motion.
Sir.
We'll go ahead, Don, sit now.
Uh you go ahead.
Okay, uh. Then we got to move on to, see they're all good.
Charlie, can you all embarrass that?
Oh yeah, is there uh everybody in favor? Uh commissioner to contact for jail. Yeah.
I'm making both Mark Dorley.
Uh second, those in favor. And uh. Courthouse and annex, I think I'd like to take that.
I'm I'm moving. Charlie, be the commissioner contact for courthouse and annex, second.
All those in favor. Then uh. Highway department, I think uh Don could take that.
I'll make the motion to appoint Don for suspicion for contact for highway department.
I'll second that, all those in favors. And the EMS, I think Mark could stay on that. Your motion for that, make motion. I'll second all those in favor. And the landfill, I'll just.
I'll make the motion to. Commissioner Cheswick to be the commissioner contact on the landfill.
I'm second, all those in favor. Then. Economic Development Board, Mark, you were on there, you want to stay on there?
Yeah.
Is there a motion to? Those are now second, all those in favor. Curpsy. The board, Don, you were on that, you want to stay on it? There's a motion of lead on on the curpsy board.
So moved.
I'll second all those in favor. And there was two vacant spots and we're.
Yeah.
Pointed by us, we just never filled them. So there's two openings for. Curpsy, the curpsy board, board, so.
You can do that on the radio.
Yeah, I'd like to actually on WKBI put like. The open seats which board there are, it is, so then.
Yeah, and any. Qualifications and restrictions.
Yeah.
Um I I don't think there are for curtsy, but there are for others.
Yes, right. Then uh the Arrowhead, Mark, you were on there, do you want to remain on that?
Yeah.
Motion, and a second by me, all's in favor, I. Uh workforce development, I I'd like to stay on that.
Did you make the motion?
Yeah.
I'll second.
All those in favor, I. Uh planning commission. Uh I'd like to remain on here.
He uh Commissioner Cheswick on the planning commission.
I'll second, all those in favor.
We. I know, never mind.
Um then we move to the library board. I believe there was somebody that sent a.
Yes.
Email on that.
Yes, there was. It was.
It's today.
That was, well, that was for the. Not for the county library board, that was for the. Other ones. Do we still, yeah, the North, the North Justin Wing Township Library Board, it was. Printed it out. But I did not bring it with me.
I don't remember seeing anything because of March off, but you, but I mean, you guys might have got something suffered.
Yeah, well, I I got, you know. Because you don't know what I did with it.
Someone, it's sent a email from. I think it was for Erica, remain on there.
It was. From Kelsey Purcell. Requesting. Joanne Gappa in place of Erica Christiansen. J O A N N E. I'll make that motion to. Appoint Joanne Gappa to be. North Jetson Wing Township Library Board.
I'll say. All's in favor. And aviation board, uh Carl Goodrich was up. We have.
We had order, did they?
There's one here somewhere. You got these in order on here?
No, I'm sorry.
You did before.
Yes, I just did before.
I know I've seen a letter.
Yeah.
There it is. So there are a motion of. Uh reappoint Carl Goodrich to the aviation board.
Second.
All's in favor. And then the hospital board. So there are motion of reappoint him to the hospital board.
Second.
All those in favor. Uh alcoholic beverage board. That was Kenneth Johnson.
The officers, so you did appoint two officers before, but they aren't unable to be on board. Because of their standing.
I thought. We cleared that up and that was.
We, so she, if they came back to where they could, but then she, Michelle lady from the state checked again, and she said they couldn't. And that's why Warren took. Um wanted a spot.
That's all we got on that three spot.
Yeah, but I mean, if you want to like. You know, hang on to that and check with Michelle.
I'd like to see that, yeah, I'd like to see that in writing now that we've heard. Two different conflicting statements from the state level about. That qualification.
Do you want me to email Michelle?
Peter Bowe aboard. Uh just the two spots for it, yeah.
Phil's spot and Victoria's.
I saw the letter from.
Victoria, can't we just call her Victoria?
Do we have another one to fill or no?
Phil's in there too.
With their motion to reappoint Phil and. Tori to.
I moved.
All's in favor. And then uh. You have your name next to that, is that the community corrections board?
We got letters for that too.
Oh yeah, I'm, I put my name next to that because I took a vacant spot, I just didn't update that thing last year. But you you do still have additional people that you need to appoint and they're, they emailed from Sean.
Yeah.
Going back to the um. Mentioned Ben Ritter's commission. Did we figure out which? Those are supposed to be staggered, right? Are we?
I did not have.
Find out which ones are staggered. Or how they're staggered and who's up when. As we, it wound up. In twenty-two, right, we had to appoint everybody because the board was completely empty. And so now we need to reestablish the. Staggered terms, the way it's supposed to be.
Okay, so. Dennis Eastark, Bernard Manuel, Mary Perrin, Earl Henry, Joy and Bailey, Mark Allen, and Tiffany Nigai. Are all on, and the Stephanie Bs that you appointed a couple meetings ago are all on till twelve thirty-one twenty-five. So that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and there's nine total, so there's still one open spot. One twenty-five.
That same spot would be too little or is that a different?
These are all the same. Well, I was kind of confused on if they were appointed every year or not to.
I would assume it's twenty-five for. Everyone.
Should be twenty-four though, January twenty- appointment.
Yeah.
So it should probably should be twenty-fourth because they were appointed at the beginning of this year, or last year.
Twenty-three.
Yeah.
Yeah, I tried digging it up.
So they should be good.
In the IC code, and I didn't find it.
We should be good until. Twenty, end of twenty-four.
Twenty-five. Yeah, that's when you'd have to be ready. But you still have once, I mean, I think you guys still have one spot because there's, you could have nine.
Nine.
You don't have to, but there could be nine. You want me to advertise one spot to them too?
Yeah. We don't stay until next year.
They're all on the same roll right now.
Right.
If they, if somebody were to fall off and be, I think then it would be different.
You want it staggered in twenty, January of twenty-five, appoint some for one year and some for two years.
Right.
And then that way it would be staggered.
Yeah.
I've talked to three of them, stagger this time, they got it on. Talking about debt, Kathy Norman.
They do that now, that's right.
That's what I'm saying, we got, just to get it staggered. The way they be, they've been good till twenty-six.
Yeah, you could. Yeah.
So we do, we just redo them and we still got.
Which ones?
Uh Kathy Norman. Bernadette and Mary Perrin.
I don't know about that Bernadette.
Oh, uh Mark Allen. I know we got one.
Mary, okay.
So you want to make a motion on yourself, move. Second, all those in favor, I. The internal controls committee.
That needs to change too, doesn't it?
So Carrie usually stays on that, but um. The other ones, they're good by another person.
Was there any uh? That's it.
Or maybe not. I don't think that one's after the, the ours. Um no, there's somebody who knows financials. I used to have Judy at the, Judy that.
At the bank?
Yeah, yeah, she retired.
The other big manager here, I'm the next.
What's that do?
Does it have to be somebody outside?
Yeah, it needs to be, um. It it, you can, I mean, you're asking of you to be on it, you could be on it, there just needs to be somebody.
Well, I'm just saying, instead of leaving it open, maybe one of the council might do it, I mean, you know, some financial people. Right, I'd be willing to do it if you guys didn't have somebody else, I just don't want you to have to be stuck with it all the time.
Pretty good idea.
I mean, internal people usually know about internal function.
Let's, let's get it advertised and. Take action in their next meeting.
Hey, do you want to reappoint Carrie Block?
Yeah, I'll make motion to reappoint Carrie Block.
In our second, second, all of the favor.
I'll submit a letter just in case you guys help with something.
Yeah, uh I'd like to.
Yeah.
Keep on. Keep with up on those, um. Just stay connected with my past life as a fire marshal, but I.
Uh Charlie. Uh could you guys um actually just a clean in, just so it's in the minutes about the EMA Advisory Council too, because I'm waiting till tonight before I call. Um EMA Advisory Council meeting, um the way the statute reads is that's very specific to who the members are, it's um. Commissioner, council, um the two town boards, uh people, the mayor, the civil air wing patrol. And it it's just, that's it, and the mayor. Um and so um in the past, it was Charlie. It has has been on that, but then. Marx picked up the LEPC in the past, so I don't know if you want to like put those together, they kind of fit together, but. Just wanted to mention that.
Is the EMA Advisory Council and the Emergency Management Board separate?
Same thing, is that on there?
Yeah, Emergency Management Board is on here. So, but that's the same thing.
We we've got a list of as well, we have it listed as the LEPC board, the Emergency Management Board, and the FEMA board.
See, the FEMA board, that came up, Tori, I was talking about, we don't have a FEMA board.
You do. It only comes together in event of emergency.
We did meet, I remember.
We we did meet before. The board is not, that board is not active currently. What I suggested was is that it builds out of EMA Advisory Council and LEPC anyways, so. You know, but just, just like for reference, I'll look like. There's a few people ask from the public and different people ask about what about FEMA board? If we have another flood. Then we may need to establish that, maybe pivot all of that out of the EMA and LEPC already, I mean, the LEPC. Is more active the last couple of years than I've seen it in the last. Thirty years, so.
Yeah, I'd like to. Stay with that.
Okay.
Maybe appoint you for all, through those items.
Mark, you want, you want the LEPC, the EMA, and then the FEMA. I'll second all those in favor. That that looks like.
We didn't have anything with the. You do the.
Oh, many corrections.
Oh, many corrections, yes. The two.
Oh, and the health board, I haven't highlighted.
Oh yeah, the health board, the health board. So I'll make motion to appoint. Emily White and Jason Schaefer. To be. Many Corrections Advisory Board. Is there? Oh, I thought we have two.
Well, that's what it is though. What? It's the Community Correction Board.
Right, yeah, Sean wrote in his advisory board, sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'm reading directly out his email, not the list, sorry.
But you only had one highlight, but there's two spots on that.
There is two.
Yes.
I have motion of second, all those in favor.
Did they, did one other thing on um as far as emergency management's concerned? The district planning committee or the DPC, I've been the commissioners of pointing to that. It's sort of the factual thing, but I mean. Literally for since it started, probably twenty years. Um I was just wondering if you guys could make a motion on that, this is the case they want a letter of renewal or something from Vegas or whatever. Um and then I was going to say, maybe Mark wants to do the proxy on that, I've had other proxies in the past, but I don't know. For some, you know, as being a county person, it's.
I'd like to know more about what 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 that is.
Technically, in the past, we used to be more aggressive and meet monthly, what it's really turned into more is a hospital. There's a hospital board that's in parallel of that, and they're kind of more active really, but. Um Jim is is active in it, Tori's active in it, and then. I usually go to every other major because they're just not that productive as they used to be. But just in case something happens, it's it's that's who the resume or representation is, it's EMA director. Um usually the EMS director or. Um two people from accounting usually, it's usually the EMS director, and then in the past, it was somebody from fire or council or whatever. But um or I'd be willing to pass that to Mark too. But. The proxy way, the proxy. Part. Maybe the way to start, that way you can go, we can switch off, you know, and it takes humor or whatever.
What board are you talking about?
Um it's the DPC, the Dist- District Planning Committee, it's part of the Department of Homeland Security, it's. It's been in existence forever, they haven't even asked me for a letter for years. Technically. There's supposed to be a letter every year, but it's just. It's really dropped down except for hospital participation. The city's supposed to have a rep there, the uh the two towns, but. I don't even know with the city.
Tori, do you get much communication on that?
The healthcare school, which meaning?
Well, it's the Healthcare Coalition meeting, it's also the DPC.
We go to those.
Okay, when's the next meeting?
It's Tuesday.
Thursdays.
But.
It's mostly hospitals right now.
I question quite a few employees may have to be there because it's, there's just really nothing to do.
It's really mainly for Tori. But sometimes there needs to be county support involved.
Yeah, that's a. We'll draft up the letter and. Is the next meeting? Uh yeah. Have you been designating? I as the uh. Proxy.
Don't work, we can even switch out at some point if you really like.
And we'll see how productive it is.
It was productive.
It was productive the five hundred years after nine eleven.
So it's a district in what sense?
Well, um there's eleven districts across the state, and it kind of goes one.
So it's a multi-county district?
It's multi-county, yeah, and it's like usually like incident command, like. You know, like basically, we kind of pivot through it, like for me. Like one of the reasons why I used to be involved is like I was part of the incident management team, the IMT, and like. It's about deployment and other things, and that's really why the. The EMAs are more involved is in case they deploy, Ted Ted deployed a couple of times. Um I worked with some smaller stuff, was in a lot of exercise. And then, you know, when they start to exercise, we help them develop the exercises, which is kind of one of my thing, but. Um.
What kind of things would you be employed to?
Um like if there was a snowstorm or a flood somewhere and like. But usually start kind of, we don't have enough assets to do it, but like South Bend Fire might take a whole shift and send a fire drug, you know, you know.
Yeah, I'll make motion we uh. Designate. The chairman is uh be appointed to the. DE.
Uh DPC.
DPC and I as the proxy.
I'll say, all those in favor, I.
We don't do anything with the drainage board? Oh, I know what it said, Ed sent a letter, but. Well, I got a little confused on because of the dates. Is those didn't used to. Used to be. In the same, those were. Stagger differently, it would be. You every year and then one of the others.
I had her. Give me a. At least for the first. Five exact dates, so the first five are good. The rest of those um are appointed yearly by each of those drainage boards.
Okay.
So this year we just need to. Maybe your commissioners.
Second. All's in favor. And health board. We don't have to do that one.
She's not done till twenty-four.
What was this? Okay. That's that. Then. You were. Okay.
Yeah, except if you could have WKBI list those. How many spots on each board that are open, if there's any requirements.
Can I ask my question?
Yes.
A little more about the internal controls. Then because Brock was talking to me and I put here. I'm talking, I am, sorry, I'm sorry, ma'am.
That was.
It's basically, it's it's basically a board that um helps control or. Helps set standards of what departments have to follow as far as internal controls. And processing payments and processing claims, payroll, stuff like that.
And how many people are on that?
Three.
Three, who are the present members?
There's no really like president or vice president of the board. I want it, Gary Block. So it's the auditor and then two other representatives.
And it's oversight of. The budgets within the county?
No, it's it's more the. Internal controls, like um separation of duties to ensure that, you know, there's less. Opportunity for. Someone to approve their own purchase request. That sort of thing.
Like the highway department?
No, that was. Yeah. Well, that's, I mean, we. That got brought to light because of our internal controls, it's just. You know, unfortunately, the the nature of a department that is requires. A level of trust that they won't go that far and put us in that position.
All right. Take this end of the appointments for now. Guess we'll look at them next meeting. We have. Julia up from Purdue.
I hope you pay your, hope it will. Or is he on the volunteer roster?
So I guess you're here again with the, is there a contract?
Yeah.
Oh, that, yeah, that.
It's the same thing.
Yeah, it's just the amount that's been approved by the county council for twenty twenty-four budget. Within the budget.
Motion to approve it. All's in favor. He was someone that done.
And I copy, or can I take it unless you want to?
Yes, I understand also.
Unless you want to Instagram me.
Decide which one is getting this. Okay.
Letting you have your support.
Thank you. Then uh, Jim, you're up.
It's a good time to take you back in time, you would need to ask now.
Good evening, man. Holiday. What this is, is. I would like to have a part-time position. Created for an administrative assistant. To assist. In getting the act of men billing. Uh, what we have found out with multiple phone calls with act of men. It's a he said, she said situation. Uh. They're saying it's our software company, some of the companies saying exactly that. Short-term solution to increase our revenue. Immediately. As. A bunch of exceptional things that keep coming through. With these exception reports, it takes about thirty-five to forty-five minutes per exception. Just today, I've got ten exceptional voice codes. They're asking for paperwork. Signatures, you have to trace back the paperwork, send the signature out to them. Backs it to them. Then you have to send it into an email and send it to a different section. It's a fun process, but it needs to be done.
So this is all. Things that are already collected, it's just.
Yes.
It needs extra manual processing that. You don't have. The.
The resources to do.
The people, enough people with enough time.
Right.
Okay.
Uh, this would fall within the budget that I have for part-time as it is. Uh. With a person to come in and do this. It will. Almost immediately show results in our collections. Because it will start getting uh. The paperwork that they're asking for. On a. Timeframe. Where they needed to.
You have nothing else but this.
Not in the office, uh, if I were to do it, it takes me all day long just to do their exceptional. Uh, Nancy's tied up with trying to do the collections and everything on her end, and try to keep track of that and payroll. Which is um. Eyes her up all day long.
And Mary Lynn's old position on the org chart is never, didn't get deleted, did it?
Um. So Nancy took Mary Lynn's spot, Nancy's spot was diminished because that took Benjamin took over that.
Right.
Spot theoretically.
Okay, so.
So this.
It's still, it's still technically exist on the org chart.
On the salary ordinance chart in the salary part, yes.
Okay.
Just not like the job.
We can reach, we can redesignate it for this.
Yes.
If. If we choose.
Financially, financially, though, we, that's why we're paying act of men, right, that, I mean.
That was the plan.
How we swallowed it. So are there any other companies besides that you meant, though, I mean, it sucks that you're having to do so much work, I mean, why don't we look for a better company? We have three years left on your contract.
So that'll be able to get out of that company.
They're not fulfilling the contract, that's when we have our attorney writing them a letter and say. You know, I mean, why keep paying them if they're ineffective and if they're creating that much work?
Oh, well, I'll get it for you tomorrow.
Sorry, I I don't.
No, no, that's why, I mean, I would love to have a way out of the contract.
Yeah, that's where we start, I mean, directly with a government entity like that, they have an obligation that they have to fulfill, and if they're not fulfilling it, then. You know, that would be the thing, is before we throw more money on it, try to do their job and pay somebody to do it, and cause them that much work, because I see Jim here working. Late on. You know.
Still might want to do this in the meantime.
Right, this is it.
Just because our collections are, that our collections are horrible, you know.
Yeah, they're. Get back.
It's not, no, it's collected billing, it's.
Straight billing.
It's not, it's not the.
But it's the administrative part that they're messing up though, correct, I mean, it's documentation and.
The documentation is on our end is correct.
Right.
It's a software issue between the two, so they need like. Signatures. Uh, and pull it.
Clean draw.
Because I can get some sign draws, this is, they say they're middle.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, they're causing the extra work for you, not your. Do is the point I'm trying to make is, so I mean, I mean, it seems like we should be able to remedy that immediately by either, hey. We want out of this right now, because we're going to go to another company right now. I mean, you know, because then if we create another position, hire somebody, and then we get that day, so we have to get rid of them, or or keep them and then pay them. I mean, we're already building, but we're trying to get you out of, out of the water this year. You know, we're still in the red million dollar class here.
This is a, that's right. Stop that measure to get money generated now. I'm all for getting rid of the billing company. I will, I would.
So next meeting and then. We have Justin. Looking to make, see if that's an option for us to put the screws towards that, you might have to fix their stuff, so it's. Automatically processed like it should be and not require so much extra manually processing that you come to us wanting. More people.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'll make the most table this.
I got one more. As you know, the transfer truck is back up now.
Yeah.
Uh. We are sending our two drivers that we hired. The EMT school.
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna need two new drivers while they're in the EMT school. You know, to cover the transfer truck. Either that or it's cheaper to hire the drivers. In long term than it is to pay the EMTs we have now. Overtime.
Hmm, hire full-time or part-time?
Uh, two full-time drivers. That's, and it's still will fall within the same budget I have.
Do we, do we have a framework to? The great temps?
So.
The two ones I'm sending out to EMT school. Will be done in May.
So we just need a couple temps for five months?
Yes. Create a temporary position for six months.
How does that process work, Rachel?
Those are BLS drivers?
Or, I mean, yeah, those are BLS drivers.
So part-time, really, you're not allotted so many part-timers, you can use however many part-timers you want, as long as you stay within the budget. Full-time, he has eleven EMTs.
Mm-hmm.
And eleven paramedics.
Okay.
On the roster, though, you have how many full-time EMTs?
Twelve.
Okay, because Larry hired one more than you should have.
Yeah.
And then how many full-time paramedics?
Yes, that's the.
Okay.
Uh. Four right now.
EMTs.
That it'll remain four.
What you, what you could do is you could like hypothetically take two of those paramedic full-time that aren't being used and make two. Temporary, I don't like temporary though, because are we, I mean, we're, so we're giving them benefits for six months and that's a. Perp and.
What what the original plan will be to take the two EMTs that we're sending, or the two drivers now that we're sending to EMT school. And make them the transfer truck people.
But so you would still need more EMTs on your roster.
So. How would uh? How negatively, or how much harder would it make your? Task of fulfilling your staffing needs if. Uh, we just tell you to. Find the part-time drivers you need. Instead of trying to get two full-time temps. In the interim.
Well, let's, I mean, go back, I don't want full-time temps, I want to move the two. Part-time drivers we have to the full-time status and bring in two more part-timers for the transfer truck. Because it'll still make you two more. That will still give us two more than what we have, and two more part-timers. Is the other two. But the two that are going to.
When are they going off to school?
Uh, starting in February.
Yeah, we need to flush this out more too.
I still, yeah, you try to get two more. Parkings, right.
This is.
Yeah, so we don't like Rachel said, baby. Perp and all that.
Oh, and it becomes a hiring for these, like, you're not, we really can't. We're really not creating any new positions, but if you're taking two positions that aren't being used and restructuring it for a different job description. You possibly could do that, but still, but he's got a right counsel for like um, structuring their salary.
But then when the other two come back, he definitely get rid of them.
If.
But we, yeah, we need to sit down and flush this out a bit more, keep on doing the part-time status, yeah, for now, and then. We'll, you know, we'll figure out how to.
It can.
Do a, do this organization the way. So it makes sense. And is easily explainable, because. This is getting hairy right now.
It can work, you, we just have to talk it out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I was just gonna ask a question about that too, because we have this thing lately with the uh. Um, Sheriff's Department too, and there's the discussions between departments in the county about somebody going to the academy when they get hired by another organization. Have you had any discussion uh, within the commission? Because I was just thinking here, like, are we paying these? People while they're going to school?
Yep. Uh, we never. We never discussed that, like, we're paying.
So they're not on the clock, I was just gonna say, if we are, kind of like the sheriff's department then, because I guess we need to have a policy from here on out, when we pay for somebody to get trained. Or pay for their training, that in a certain amount of time, they have to pay it back, sorry, I I should have mentioned that.
We did discuss that once before, putting one under contract.
Because right now we have a situation with another department where they went to our our department, and there's an issue because they had just gotten out of. Um, uh, the academy, so this would be like a similar thing, because.
Yeah.
You may have experienced this on your department too, Jim, we put people through EMT school, and then they never. Spend one day in the department, they say bye, and they get a job as. As an EMT and never fulfilled anything with the fire department, I'm just afraid that happens to you.
Well, they're not paying benefits.
We're not paying them while they're going to school?
No, we're not paying them to go to school, we're paying for their school, we're not paying for the school, twenty-four thousand dollar grants paying for them.
Okay.
We're we're. We've got a grant for three EMTs and two paramedics paid for it, but it's.
Are they getting their salaries?
No, not while they're in school. There is, there's.
Is it a full-time class, is it a full-time?
No, it's all part-time nights.
So they would still work part-time?
Yeah, they would still work their normal shift. So, I mean. We're growing our own within the county.
Great, it's great, it's great, it's great, was that, I was trying to get that sort of, I like the grant.
If we're gonna start funding training.
Yeah.
I mean, there are, there are state agencies that um. You know, give educational grants to fill, the first one that comes to mind is the way DCS operates because of their need. You know, they'll provide scholarships and grants for um. College work, you know, and then they'll require like a two-year. Period to work in in exchange for that, and if we're going. Because right now, as far as I know, we don't. Fund any schooling or, and we don't pay anybody a salary while they're in school full-time.
Just the academy.
Okay. And so. When you look. Well, with with law enforcement, things get different. Um, you know. They've got everything different. But. If possible, if we're gonna send somebody through a training on our dime. Look into maybe. Drawing up a. A contract signed upon, give, signed. As part of the employment agreement.
Yeah, and that's, 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 yeah, put your thumb on it, training reimbursement agreements specifically with sheriff's departments and town police departments, kind of the hot contentious thing right now. Issue we had with the North Johnson Police Officer, you know, coming to the county.
Right.
You can do training reimbursement agreements if it captures just training expenses, you can't ask them to pay back wages. Uh, they can't serve as a penalty, so you have to tie it to the actual cost of the training, like Mark said, you have to do it at the start of employment, because if you sign it after they're employed. There is no consideration for their agreeing to pay that back, so, I mean, it gets kind of tricky, but you can do that. Just again, you've got to structure your payback, you've got to say, you know, it's tied to eighty-five hundred dollars, and we can justify that with training expenses, not payback of wages. So, I mean, yeah, we can certainly do that, it's a discussion being had, not just with you guys, but about every town that I represent that has a police department, because that's, I mean, you're right. See the police officers that go get on the academy. Working for the town of Winemac, and as soon as they get that academy, they go for the county or they go to, I mean.
You know, and if you ever start doing a C E L program or other things too, where we provide any training, you know. Or in the future, if we, even though it's paid by a grant, there's, you're still administering it for them. But, you know, the other thing I'm thinking too is. We can also send out a notice through the commission that says. Other entities in the county, we're setting a policy, so we hope you do, because we're not gonna pay you in the future. You know, it's just, you know, everybody has something set, that way everybody's protected, and it's an insurance policy, and each, and each, you know, the towns have their own deal. City has their own deal, so they're covered, we're covered, and you know.
So yours. I tried this six years ago, and they said, I won't leave you. I mean, if it is, that'd be, I'm.
So there. Indiana. Indiana allows them, but courts don't like them, so you have to be really careful with them, sitting on the other side of things, I I beat one before on behalf of an officer, because they went five years and were trying to recoup too many expenses, so. Like, you gotta be careful.
Right.
Stick to about three, you know, a three-year payback, if you sent. Your officers, for example, so you may want to institute this, the sheriff department, send them to, can send them to the academy. You say, you know, if you quit within the first year, you have to pay back twelve thousand dollars of expense, second year, eight thousand dollars, third year, four, I mean. So you gotta be really careful with it, because courts don't like it, but they'll uphold it, and you know, you go through all the right steps. So.
I think that's what you and I talked about, two-year and three-year.
Yeah, three years is about the maximum amount, so you gotta be careful, but. It can be done, but you know, I'd also be lying if I didn't say that towns that I represent that have done that, also had trouble recruiting new members, because people could say. Well, it's not my intention to leave, but I don't want to be stuck somewhere for three years, so there's a trade-off there, it could have a chilling effect on your hiring.
But it may also.
Investigate.
Right.
And I think. We've had time to do that. You said, they're not going to school till February, so. Is that after our first meeting in February?
Before.
Before. So, yeah, we can, we can get moving on this and have. More information and a better plan for our next meeting.
Yeah.
Just get Justin that contract and.
I get a breathing one more.
Next year. You might look into a few others to just check them.
Yeah, because act of men is getting their money either way, whether we get our due back. Thanks, guys.
All right, is there a motion to approve the payroll claims in the amount of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents?
So one second. Alls in favor.
Is there a motion to approve the vendor claims in the amount of one million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand? Forty-nine dollars and five cents.
So.
Motion in a second, alls in favor.
Yeah, on payments and that one.
Yeah.
So a motion to approve the minutes from Monday, December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Alls in favor. Then there's a. Uh, Treasurer's Office. Leanne Fleming's. Keys, yeah, is there a motion to approve that? Yes, second, all those favor. Then we have the. Bit acceptance for. Bid acceptance for C C M G.
Yeah, so the the. Alright, the bids came in oh about thirty three thousand dollars over, I wanted you guys table it last night, um last night, you need to make sure that I had enough money and. Seated roads and bridges that I could cover it, um I do, so I still wanna do this project because. Can use it, eleven hundred can use it.
Motion. Falls in favor? Then I take it literally, you got, this is about the truck.
Yes, um. I'd like to welcome our new operations foreman in the back row, Brock Kenny. Um great addition to our kind of highway department, looking forward to uh working with him and. Making things go smoother, so he did go check that, yeah. So he did go check that vehicle out, if you have any questions.
What's it look like? Better than what was sold, is that the one that we sold?
Yeah, in twenty.
Like cabin better than seventeen.
So what's the, I guess, what's the? Purpose of I to replace one truck or or have an extra?
Um. So if we, so we sold this in the auction in twenty twenty for five thousand dollars. Um. Truck seventeen. Has a bad cab, then we can't use it at all. So what we'd wanna do is truck seventeen and truck old truck sixteen, what we got rid of, they're twins. So we would like to buy sixteen, so we can take the motor out of seventeen and put it in sixteen, and then we'd have a spare truck, is there anything else that we missed on that truck?
That was the suspension, Brock. Good, he put a new springs on it. And pushings. They looked like there was no gaps and stuff, and I look. But he's put a compass, I mean, a new air compressor. There's so many parts and it's hard to get parts, it's thrilling right now. But I just chatted down, a new injector pump. New bed cylinder. All tires. That's ten new tires. And but been reworked and tell me. And the cabinets, like I said, lot better shape, sixteen.
I still can't understand why we got rid of that.
I know you're new, and it might be like our mechanics could handle a whole switch.
Yeah, they told me today, cause Frank was with me this morning, he's. It's a good week, and have a switch ready to go. SWAT motor, put a box sander.
And the, so then, since we ba- basically will definitely be junking seventeen, we're gonna pull the dash out of that to fix another. One of our vehicles too.
I mean, it's all dusted?
Uh, no, um, this particular truck caught on fire, but you're never gonna mess it. And since the fire, the um. Heater hasn't worked properly.
You won't, you'll piss the other one off, I mean, you'll keep the part of the.
Yes. Yeah, for sure.
Well, definitely, I mean, it's hard, as as it is to get parts.
Yeah, and and there's four dozen that can use the parts. And interchangeable out there, so.
How many miles are on on that?
And he didn't say.
I didn't check that either.
Did we know how many were on it when we sold it?
I'm sure they're down.
Not that it really matters if they don't.
Could be an easy fix, though.
You know.
They were coming back from operational and. From their line of oil. Line. Uh broke or city broke or something, and it pumped all the oil. So.
We're just in dire need of spare truck.
If we have one of our operation units go down and all the snowstone. We can't. Sit and wait for how long, however long it takes to get parts nowadays.
That's that's the biggest.
Yeah, and it's not like, it's not like sometimes we have extra trucks that even Brock could jump in and go, you know, finish the area, like, there's no extra trucks.
You got money in both, we need.
No, I I have money to cover the seventy five hundred. I just, because it's a weird situation, and we're buying back a vehicle, we sold it off, you know, I just wanted to get your approval.
We used to have how many extras out there, at one point, there used to be a couple.
We had a lot. We had a lot.
What happened?
Uh, oh, I have an accident.
And our next, and the one, the four that we're waiting on, the first one doesn't get delivered till when?
Um. Six months from today. Yeah, six to eight months from today.
So maybe in time for next winter, but definitely not for this one.
That'd be nice.
Sounds like the decision pretty much made.
Hmm, I make a motion to go ahead and do. Brock don't, don't let him check on work on this engine, just make him swap. We can work on engine apps, you know. I can be quicker to get it dealt going. And do whatever to know, try to tear it apart after the day and have no other work.
So you had a motion in the second, all those in favor?
Um, since you have. Highway people heard, do you want to talk about the C C M G twenty twenty four dash zero one, if that's something that you, you wanna review that stuff and approve it in the January sixteenth meeting, is January sixteenth?
That was on this stuff, right? C C M G applications due at the end of January.
I just wanted to know if this is. These, this is something you're interested in, and you want them to move forward.
Um, did we talk about it before at any point in the meeting?
No, it's just open, it's just open today, right, yeah. Call for projects.
I guess could we. The next meeting. I wanna kind of. Have the info out there too. Yeah, if we go over that by the next meeting, that'd be good.
Do you have any questions for him while they're there on either the um the chip seal program, maybe just approved, or this new? Call for project?
Hmm, there's chips over there, how many miles we get?
Fifteen miles, I believe, yeah, around that.
That's what it said on.
Yeah.
And. We've got. The. Things in place to make sure the. Work that's done is. Better than the work that got done in the fall.
Yeah, I'll be on them.
Okay.
It's out at four hundred today, check it. Tomorrow, just so.
Four hundred and five.
It was pretty bad.
And they are working on it.
Yeah, they are. Put down two. Lot batch or loads. They just got to the bitch there, I don't know, you're probably more familiar.
Oh, you checked out.
Check it all, yeah, why they're over there.
That one graded.
Right, is that one that's graded by chance? No, no, it it, so you we patch it.
It's that, I just want today and yesterday, I mean, you, where's that, six?
Six fifty, uh eleven hundred over there.
West to four twenty one, six fifty. We drove four hundred, it's not even bad.
They get graded, but they haven't.
So the the country is gonna be creating this. Yeah, but I mean, we can send out one of our graders.
So it must be pretty rough. Yeah, they're they're within the next day, I mean.
Why don't we just go in and send out?
Cause see, that's what, I mean, now. I don't know how that agreement was really set up, I think.
So, road use agreement, so it. Doesn't actually explain it to me in my terms that I can understand, if we need. We have to request to them something that we want done, and then they have.
Close forty eight hours.
Forty eight hours to respond to that. Okay, so maybe it's. But if we, like, when we go out and do the work, we can't ask for reimbursement for that. If we're making the decision to go out there and do it before we ask their permission. So if we go out and do the work, it's on us, but it's our roads.
But, and like you told us, which I don't think's right, we need to figure that out, and said. We tell him he got seventy two hours to respond.
Yes.
So then he calls.
Town and country.
Town and country, they might be two weeks.
That is correct, yeah, and and that that's how it's set up now, I mean, that's how it was. I don't agree with it, I don't think it's good.
I talked to Chris today, and I think Chris thought Steve and those guys were gonna react a little faster too, I mean, I think.
And I think Tony was even there, we talked to him. And they acted like they was, I don't know, we'll see. That's what he told us. We gotta tell him within seventy two hours, he can take whatever.
And he, and he's talking about Steve, so I think there might be a disconnect between Chris and.
Well, like I said, I talked to Chris about it today, and Chris has told me before, you know, like. You know, you guys want me to talk to him about something different, I will, but I feel like that's unacceptable. And they could always find somebody else also, now, they also said. That technically, like, one of the reasons why we did that was Dan didn't think we could, we could handle, they offered to pay us, they were willing to pay us for all. I mean, if we think we have this staff, and we wanna take another shot at that, I could say, hey.
I don't understand.
I told him, I think we got a hand.
Meeting man versus nature is just.
I think it's possible when he talks to him, but.
I I talked to Chris, he had it, he did call you, right?
Yeah, yeah, right after that meeting.
I'll see when he's coming to them too.
Okay.
Well, now, did I hear at the last council meeting that the former road superintendent told his crew not to worry about those roads?
That is correct, they were not allowed to.
The county is at fault too. Was.
Yes, now, the thing was. When we sat down, when I, there was a whole group of us. Um, I think councilwide, I think then it would have been Charlie, but we sat here with all the engineers for each one, and that sort of the handshake agreement was to be like. Hey, you've got drivers out there, so if you see something before we do, let us know, like, we're fit, we'll fix it, we wanna be good neighbors, they told us that. And until this all happened with them, we didn't know that they were told not to do that, we didn't know that either.
Yeah. The way Dan always made it sound like. You know, it said it was their responsibility.
They, I got out there, the drivers, many drivers told me, you you know, they even, are you sure, cause we're not allowed to go out there? Yes, I'm sure, get out there. Yes, day one, um, Justin's got that section of the contract.
Just so, cause I know. We're, you know, things get confused. So it's a section eight subsection two, maintaining repairing roads and safety signs is necessary to ensure the safety and continued passage. The public and developers equals while constructing is ongoing, get contact about highway department director. Developer, its contractors or subcontractors will commence the needed, will commence the needed repairs within seventy two hours of notification from the highway department director to the transportation coordinator. In parentheses, weather permitting, in the event that any damage poses a danger, potential danger to traffic construct for the public, including without limitation, damaged stop signs, potholes, washouts, and collapsed culverts. Developer shall cause the repair and appropriate safety measures commenced as promptly, as promptly as possible, if at any time developer fails to make any repair required by this agreement. So after the seventy two hours they do not make the repairs. Parties agree that the county shall have the right to make all repairs that cease fit and shall do so, and developer shall reimburse the county accordingly upon request. Or demand for the same, so, will commence needed, will commence needed repairs within seventy two hours of notification, not. You know, se- seventy two hours, and then they have to get a hold of somebody, so they've got a three day period, if they don't in that three day period, we can correct it, and they've gotta pay us those costs.
Actually, then. When did we talk to Steve, Thursday, so, does it, weekends included? So actually, we can charge them for the work we did out there today.
Okay.
Yeah, cause I mean, that's. You need to tell them about that. If they don't get on, do the same thing.
Okay. So, do you want me to? Do you want me to? Mention the six fifty south and eleven hundred west, and then give them the three days? Or do you want me to send drivers out there tomorrow morning?
I'd say give them the three days, and if they don't send them out, and just keep track of it.
Okay. Well, we'll wait on that.
Chris called me three or four times a week, I mean, it's all right for me to tell Chris that we're not real happy with the way that's working now.
Yes.
And are we interested in negotiation, the possibility of us just taking care of it and not paying us instead?
Probably, that would be more ideal.
No, we do have staff, they all have the territory, that's one of the things that never made sense when Dan didn't wanna do that, they all, like. Crystal County knows how hard highway department operates, is these people live, a lot of times they have a truck with them. They place their own area too, so like, they're always keeping an eye on the roads, like, they're, soon as they leave, they're on duty, and they're looking at our our um inventory, so.
Alright. Yeah, I like you talking, I talk a bit, but not that often.
Oh, and I'm gonna reach out to him too. I haven't spoken to him in months.
He's probably due for a coffee, I'll see.
Now, I can still drive fifty. Especially since you said I can, just to see how bad they are, but they are washboardy, you have to straddle to drive that bus. Yeah, ours pickup truck was terrible.
What'd you say, like? They destroy those roads, I I don't even know how I'm gonna maintain them.
Well. I had, I had a conversation with the. Vendor that provided the. Solution. Um, the actual material solution, and yeah, that's, that's in that you gotta. Get down. Almost six feet. To regrind it and compact it, so it doesn't come back. And. Maybe a little more important, if if we get this adjusted the way we need it, so we can respond as quickly as we need to, with Chris. Work out, work a little more closely with the. Um, calcium fluoride vendor, you know, and and making sure. It gets done and applied. In a manner that conforms to their. Um, prescribed solution, rather than. Them just selling it to somebody else who does it in a way that makes sense to them, but. Doesn't maybe follow all the nuances that the installation actually requires.
You know, I tried to explain that a lot on on Facebook, you know, not trying to get involved in in too much, we're trying to answer as much as I can in one swoop, as, you know, as you're appointed the agent on the seller. And um, but that's the thing, is those roads weren't that great to start with, and it has to do with the way the roads. And and people say, oh, I don't wanna hear it again, but it's true, we had a lot of dirt roads that became gravel roads. And then they were covered with chip seal, chip.
You know, muck soil underneath.
And that's the thing, like, because, you know, like, to Mark's point, normally what you do is you cut it, and then you start with rip raft. And then you hit ones, and then you do some layers that you compact, and then you start building a road on top of that, and it can be, it can be steep, you know, instead of this inches deep, so. But tha- that's the thing, is they they all, though, when we sat down, they said, look, it doesn't make sense to rebuild a road. During the process, cause all it's gonna do is destroy a brand new road. So, I mean. It behooves them, you know, it's, I know it's painful for those.
I don't have to drive them, I just do it, so I feel the pain.
When we have this law, like Dave saying, we'll talk to them about those. They send the dogs out there, I don't think that will.
Yeah, the grading will not get rid of those washboards, specifically on those two roads, and um. Or any more than a day, day and a half with the traffic that's, you travel around them.
There's some roads over there that you can still grade, but there's just one or two that, um, you can't.
The thing is, needs to be done before.
I know, before it freezes, I know.
It's gonna come, I mean, it's.
Can I just add, it's not all completely negative, my husband talked to a neighbor over there on those roads today. And he said, my husband just brought up, bad roads, aren't they, and he said. Hey, it's gonna be all worth it in a year, they're gonna be beautiful roads, they're all gonna be new, and it's gonna be so. Heaven, so we're like surprised that you're.
We're gonna have to keep. Keep a close eye on that too. But we don't, the new roads aren't as satisfactory as selection as the mitigation for how quickly they crumble. Is uh. I have a feeling that. What may be planned by. Chris and his company is not. Quite in line with what we envisioned, if the roads looking like at the end of this. It's it's a, yes, it's it's a lot of it, it's a lot of it, leaving it, um, you know, not following that agreement. You know, not staying on top of them, you know, but yeah, there's, there's a slight. Component that's a a lack of executive oversight.
You know, there were a lot of calls, I have to say, that a lot of the complaints that I've received were about dust control, I talked to Dan about it, and then Rachel took took over, we've talked about. You know, there were a lot of calls. I have to say that a lot of the complaints that I've received were about dust control. I talked to Dan about it and then Rachel took took over. We've talked about dust control a lot too. That's gonna come back again. That's been the number one complaint.
I know the one day I went out there to check eleven hundred and six fifty area. Cause I think you were coming out there, but they were actually, you know, spraying so for dust control.
I went out there too and, you know, I saw they were spraying and I mentioned that to. Some people online and they said it doesn't last. And so I talked to Rachel. LTAP was talking about a soy based, it's more like. Non motor oil either, but it's still a, like a soy based product. So she was gonna look at products for the spring, cause that's gonna come back to haunt us.
That'd be a little better, I think, to what their plans.
Uh, you got anything else?
Yeah, I got, just so everybody's on board. I know I talked to you guys. We're gonna take that to the rest, to the rest.
Yeah.
From the. Surveyors, you know, and send it out to the park. It's not, we're not giving it to them, you know, full time, but we're gonna put it out there so they got something to use instead of their own equipment. We'll keep looking for a golf cart or something reasonable for them.
So they have somewhere to keep it out there?
Yes, they gotta grab it, which I won't take it out to. We got that one that Rick has been. They could, the surveyor could use that. Or. Tori or Jim needed, they'll have, you know, we'll still have something around here to use. There's a trailer or something. And there is a trailer. I can haul on, you know.
Are you getting the trailer out of the park or the trailer? You're gonna stay here? Okay.
Somebody needs to rip me, leave it. Just everybody's on board.
Or do you wanna talk about the multi hazard mitigation plan team?
Thanks, brother.
All, all we've done is sent emails out so far to. Kinda ask some people to show up to the two meetings that we have to have in January for it. We just sent those out today, so. That's kind of the update on it. Yeah, just waiting to see who is gonna actually participate in that.
And we didn't um. Take any action, uh. Do we have a plan to move forward with the uh? Food inspector at the health department?
I believe so. I was gonna wait.
So I didn't, because that's one of those items that has to have that sixty day.
So I got two ass estimates for over here. And I'm waiting on third one. I'll take it to the county. Cause you gotta, that means one office, if you hire somebody.
I'd like to. I don't wanna drag your feet on that.
We reach out to Frank and ask.
Yeah, well, I, I just wanna get that description finalized so we can advertise it.
I don't think he has anybody like in mind for it. He just needs the, because it's a new position, he needs the description approved before we can even post board.
I wanna, I wanna get that. Description in front of us to. We had, we had in front of us, we tabled it and, so we need to take an actual action on, on the description. It's gonna be a busy meeting, next meeting. We'll be here past noon. Right? I think also out there at the highway, I know we talked about it with the attainment system around that pub mill and that.
And I need something around the um fuel tank too.
Yeah, so I need to get prices on concrete for the pub mill and that. I don't know who even will do that. I mean, what's that? Get a cou- couple quotes on it. Big project. It's gonna, it needs to be done. And.
About see where the whole.
Yeah, and the fuel tanks too. So like, the diesel fuel tank have a wall around it, but the other fuel tank does not. I don't know.
Tanks that they might do.
Which that might be. But for the pub mill, I'm sure it's gonna have, I mean, it's all gonna have to be formed and poured and. But that's gotta, we're gonna start getting quotes and, cause by the time the weather breaks, it's gonna be time to do it. Cause I mean. Yeah, that's, yeah, that never got any motion or anything. Well, I was thinking one of them hoop buildings, but need to get prices on that. And then, cause you set those on them concrete blocks and. Two ton blocks. And I mean, the town of Judson has that one, but it's pretty. Uh, length one is probably shorter than one.
I at least find out where they bought it from. And then I s- I still have one quote for the design of what it looks like now. Keenan turned in that quote. It was Keenan, right?
King.
King. I think that one was forty six thousand. So yeah, I'll get a quote for the other. Couple more.
So the blocks are probably what? I remember when they're like eighteen bucks or fifteen bucks.
The EMS.
Oh, yeah, I've been. Yeah. Yeah, my big concern is not interfering with what you already got in place with. Well, maybe just switched over. But is it? I just wanna, you know, position where it looks like we're paying for the same thing twice. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying to remember the way our other contract is structured.
She does more, like, she has more group settings, I think. Well, if you have something. Um, the lady for EMS.
Oh, yeah, yeah, her specialty is um. First responders and emergency services personnel dealing with those particular. Types of on the job traumatic events. Full, full disclosure, that's the same person that. My wife is contracting for office space and billing services. Um, you know, her, her business is. Doing business with Sherry's business. Um.
Shouldn't get any kickbacks, would she?
No.
Consulting fees.
But, but that's, that's just how I know, how I know this particular individual. It was an odd coincidence. When I went to um. An event where, where Sherry was at and she mentioned, she was working with Jim and like. This is something I should have known before we m- met in this scenario, but um, yeah, I did. I'd say with that particular specialization, because the challenges and the situations that. Um, emergency services personnel in are, are unique. Um. And, and having someone with that. Specialized expertise rather than the, the general. Um. Therapy resources that would be available through EAP would be then of a. Particular benefit to our personnel.
Yeah, no, the only questions I have in that contract, I think she answered them following email. It just came in right before this meeting.
Yeah, but no, I'll have her coming. Right, our February meeting to do a full presentation.
Would you put in the units that then two pieces of equipment were owned by the commission? Not by a. Office or whatever.
That department.
One more thing for you, Justin, the beach still. I've seen that yesterday, so he probably had time to respond to you.
No, I think, I think you told me, cause we talked on the phone a couple of weeks ago, but I thought he was gonna be out of the country. I thought it was best, so that pumping, the pumping station, it says that they detain us regardless, uh, that they utilize the space. So how I structured it was an easement agreement. Cause he said, well, either an easement or donation agreement. I thought best to call it an easement agreement. So we just put in the easement agreement that regardless if they use. Our property for pumping, you know, payments of four thousand dollars will come in regardless. So, I mean, if they don't use it and they wanna call a donation, that's on them. But we're, we're gonna just call it, you know, as a license for fifteen years to pump water.
And instead of in there, uh, you put down the space or something, but I can't get that open. What side, you know, where? To lash up, putting in west side.
Well, what, what they'll have to do is, um, because there's exhibits in there, but I don't have the description of the property that they wanna use. So I just, I just refer to an exhibit A and exhibit B. I think exhibit A refers to the utility easement itself for the pump and uh, exhibit B talks about the temporary construction. Easement that could be used, but they're gonna have to attach those because I don't have that description.
Right, I just don't want ten years from now waiting around. They, we're gonna wanna put it in the middle of the beach. And not that they would, but just so, you know, work out.
Yeah.
I don't have anything, but can, I, I'd like to hear about Bernard's grant that happened today, cause I didn't, I.
Um, the clerk's office secured uh, ten thousand one hundred sixty nine dollars and some odd cents. Grant from the secretary of state's office. Um, Diego was up here today. To uh, present it to us. Uh, we got it for election security. Um, to help pay for the parks fee. Evil books and for the cones to secure the election jude. So. It was nice to see Diego coming back to Stark County and. I was kinda happy that my grant got fully funded and approved. And now I, we got ten thousand dollars in. Election security, so.
You do the work.
Does anyone else have anything for us?
Oh, I got one thing.
Yes, Dave.
Um, so you know, we've been having some different discussions about healthcare. Um, it's kind of been ongoing where Mark and I have been talking to the hospital about some different things and been meeting kind of regularly. Um. The Save the Hospital, that community uh, foundation has been approaching commission and the council about the Save the Hospital funds. I think there's been enough reluctance across both boards where we're just nervous about what the hospital's doing next and things like that. Um. But they have some pretty passionate ideas about that. I haven't really ever brought my ideas about it. But I, I've actually shared it with Rachel, a couple of people, but. I feel like we're in crisis with help now anyway. Even mental health, people dying, there's people not being healthy here and men having the opportunity to live better. So I don't disagree that there's not. An opportunity to do something possibly. I just don't know some, all, whatever. But um, I met with them the other day because, you know, they obviously saw that I had some, you know, some reservations with it. And, and you know, kind of my thing is more healthcare and, you know, that kind of stuff, I, I, I don't know, as far as what I participate in the council. Um. And so the suggestion was made. That a committee get put together so they could make recommendations and the committee be people, um, like a physician. Count, uh, commission, a council person, uh, certain people from the community and healthcare and things like that. And so. Um, since Mark was already meeting um, with the hospital and the hospital will be involved with it, Health Link will be involved. You know, those kind of people. Um, but um, I s-. Thought, in fact, I had, had to see Charlie, but I even saw it down. So I mentioned it to Don, but. Um, I thought maybe Mark would wanna do that. Maybe there's a, a proxy in, in, in that case or whatever, but.
Yeah, that's definitely something I've been wanting to dive into. I've been in talks with the Trust Indiana folks. Um, Don, you had talked about maybe taking it, splitting it. Between. Right. Yeah, I think, yeah, if, if the. If we can come on to a good dollar amount, that will uh. Generate fu- funds through both. So that we hold, that way we hold on to the majority of that already public health access, but also partner with. The community foundation to generate a regular. Stream of revenue that will. By the ideas.
We can do it, but. Maybe we all partner together on a project to move forward. I mean, you know, um, I've talked to Mark about this before. Talked to Don and Charlie too about the fact that. You know, I'm excited about doing a build out here to make room for the health department, but someday it would be great to be able to expand our building. So. Place people like Health Link can have more space, to be able to see more patients, do more things for our population here. But maybe have the health department together, near the hospital, like all the health stuff together. So that way the residents of Stark County don't have to try to travel around and find out, where do I go to get, you know. Consultation on this or a shop for this or whatever. It'd be kinda nice to have a one stop shop too. We already have an asset there. You know, maybe that's an opportunity. We have property out at the jail, but I mean, I think ultimately. You know, I don't even know someday, maybe a YMCA type thing, who knows? But I mean, like right now, like. When we were at AIC, we learned about two things on the healthcare side. One of them looked up was a self first, which is great. I mean. Um, you know, starting with the auditors conferences, when I heard about those, crazy about it. Very boisterous with Dr. Weaver about it, about how small uh, communities. Um, you know, get left out, but also the mental health initiative that they're doing alone with the living room concept and things like that. Right now in Stark County, we have a couple of problems is to really make that program effective. We don't have somewhere where if we, you know, as, as that product, like we, they have the, the number, the. What is it? Uh, seven one one or whatever the, the. Two one one, you're right. So we don't, we, we have the ability where they can call, but if they said, oh, I need that place where I need to go. Cause I'm getting ready to use or I'm getting ready to offend. We don't have that. And a lot of communities have already gotten to that point where there, there's a living room already where they can go. And there's literature there. Maybe there's a counselor there, maybe there's not. But you know, that's how that program wo- works and it rolls out, but. Maybe if we had something more substantial, we could have something like that. We could have places where people could have group meetings. You know what I mean? So I mean, it's baby steps, but. You know, I'm just thinking like, why not? Why keep investing money, try to make money off of it? I think, you know, and I'm, this kinda goes against the way I usually am about, you know, trying to, you know, generate more revenue. But I think at the same time, that money was designated originally for the health for the people of Stark County. So it's two things. One is making sure we have a hospital, but if we can get a hospital partner at some point that is just, you know, absolutely gonna be here and partner with us. But it does make sense to use something with that money to help people now. Like, why wait?
Yeah, let's, let's get that, get that community, that uh, community together.
And, and I suggested that Jackie be the pivot point for that, you know, like just cause um, uh, she and uh. Uh, Mrs. Lucas, like they already had a lot of.
And we've got this, and we've. We have a group together separately. To evaluate solutions for the, the other.
Thinking maybe that between the two of us or the three of us and Don's gonna, you're gonna be involved in it too, but. County government, maybe we could look to those same people. They might be a good people to.
Certainly, certainly sounds like it's got the potential to be a, of. A productive thing to take for health solutions in the county.
I mean, right now, I don't know if everybody realizes, we have one physician in Stark County and, you know, Dr. Fritz is, you know, also, I mean, but besides Dr. Fritz, we have one, we have one physician. Who's also the head of our health department. We're suffering, you know, I mean, so.
Well, how do you get hard?
Well, you know, there's, there, there's things I wanna talk about. I asked Dr. Weaver, I don't know if he wants to think, but like recruitment, we can use some of those dollars. To try to recruit healthcare personnel to come to Stark County. We can use Save the Hospital Fund for that. But we start building this infrastructure and they go, wow, you guys are really committed to healthcare in Stark County. That'll make them wanna come more because. I've said this before, I, I, I've always been a naysayer with hospitals and it really hard on them, like, you know, and. Angry sometimes just about what we get in Stark County.
What I've said in those meetings at the hospital.
Yeah, exactly. But I mean, they, they've also challenged me and said, you wanna talk to our recruiters, you can sit down in front of them. You know what they say? Well, you don't have a target. You don't have a Starbucks. Well, you know what? We've got a lot of other things too. We, and we've also got a lot of need. So, you know, I think there's. There are other ways that we can work together with those, both of those funds. Also with the facilities to make something a lot better. And then on top of it, people that need. Um, cardiac rehab, you know, um, you know, physical rehab, things like that. Get something, be better. So people start doing more things here. So I mean, I mean, I know Frank brought up a few things like courtesy program and things like that, but there's. A whole nother layer of things that right now people are missing out in Stark County. They have to drive to get it. We don't even have Uber in Stark County, so. If they don't have a scheduled ride, I mean, other, other counties and other states are doing all kinds of creative things to be able to make access for people with healthcare. Transportation, but not ten different entities doing it. Consolidate, get everybody speaking together and get everybody on the same page. So none of that money is wasted on redundancy.
There's a a group in Marshall County called uh Health and Wellness Committee that formed when we did Estella. And they do exactly that, there's hospital representation in the group, the bone center. Uh, there's probably about forty people that came together and they've come up with creative solutions, but also they've brought money into our county. So for example, they want a million dollar grant uh called Project Hope that deals with uh treating opioid addiction and. Uh, very solid, that committee alone has done more in two years than we've seen in our county in probably decades. I'm happy to put you in touch with.
Sure, I actually met one of the council people when I was at AIC that was talking about. Wasn't you, that's okay, yeah.
But I'll I'll send your commissioners and you uh contact information, there's two people that cheer it in our county. It's incredible the work they're doing and just how much progress they've made, but they, it is a very collaborative organization, it's. Anyone involved in health and wellness initiatives, but they also look at quality of life, quality of place to um. We're we're having the same issues attracting more doctors, hospital services exiting the county. Uh, but there's at least an active group addressing it and they're making a lot of progress, so if you wanna. Figure out kind of what they're doing, I'll get you guys a contact info for some people that.
At least we're chipping away at it, I mean.
Yeah.
The county government has taken a lot of heat this last year because of solar, I'm just gonna say it, but. What what a lot of people don't get to hear about it, it's everyday things that we're working on behind the scenes, like in healthcare initiatives and things like that. I mean, just what we did with EMS coming from BLS during the time that I've been on here, I I'm still proud of that, that we were able to go from BLS to ALS. And you know, and just offer something better, I just, but the little key thing too is hopefully we can get a better commitment from the hospital also on.
Yeah.
Hopefully that's the next step, you know, as it changes CO and things like that. Uh, basic life support, so we went from basic life support to advanced life support, so essentially, you know, now they have parents, well, Jim was mentioning that, we have paramedics. Normally what we have is a at least one paramedic that's gonna respond, and so somebody's having a heart attack and. You know, or something really critical or critical trauma, they have ten times better outcome with that kinda.
We have a small incident at our home and the ambulance people are like that. But we didn't need the ambulance, but they said they were close and when your fire cone comes in, they come.
So any more business for us? Motion to adjourn.